According to the National Geographic, ocean plastic is estimated to kill millions of marine animals and seabirds every year. And scientists predict that by 2050, plastic will outweigh the number of fish in the entire ocean. Plastics often break down into smaller and smaller particles called microplastics, which can be ingested by both animals and people and remain in our environment for hundreds of years or longer. Here are a few helpful tips on how you can help stop the tide on plastic pollution. Tip one: Bring reusable bags when grocery shopping. Tip two: Avoid using plastic straws or use reusable straws when having a drink. Tip three: Drink from a reusable water bottle instead of buying individual bottles. Tip four: Tell your friends and family about the effects of single-use plastics. You can help reduce the amount of single-use plastics by spreading the word and going green. For more information and to take the pledge, visit reducereuseTampaBay.org.
Good evening and welcome to the April 10, 2025 Land Development Code Amendment Public Hearing. Tonight, we will hold the first of two public hearings on proposed amendments to the Land Development Code. The adoption public hearing for these amendments will be held on May 8. Development Services will now introduce tonight's first item.
Good evening, Commissioners Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services Department. The first item on the LDC amendments, first public hearing, is LDC 25-0399. This is a storage of recreational vehicles and private pleasure crafts. This text amendment will permit the outdoor storage of recreational vehicles, private pleasure crafts, and utility trails through a planned development zoning. This code amendment would differentiate the storage of RV, private pleasure crafts, and utility trails from other items considered open storage when permitted in a planned development zoning district. Currently, the storage of these vehicles is treated in the same way as storage of other equipment and materials, whereas the storage of both an RV is typically served as a neighborhood serving commercial use that supports residential development as opposed to general outdoor storage. Therefore, this proposal is to allow for that consideration through a planned development. Available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, next item.
The next item is LDC 25-0400. This is non-conforming lot subdivision recognition. This text amendment will provide for a subdivision procedures to recognize non-conforming lots which were part of a lot split after the adoption of the comprehensive plan in July 26, 1989. This amendment will allow lots that need to be platted and bring them into compliance with subdivision requirements. These new subdivisions shall not exceed the density established in the current future land use designation and be subject to all applicable zoning district standards except for minimum lot size. This LDC provision will only apply to lots in existence as of February 1, 2025. I do want to note for the record that the code language was updated yesterday to clarify that the exception for the minimum lot size. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Next item.
Commissioners, the next item is LDC 25-0401. This is rezoning application with the related comprehensive plan amendments. This, a text amendment, will allow an applicant to elect having a rezoning application to be concurrently to a related comprehensive plan amendment for unincorporated Hillsborough County. If an applicant elects, the applicant will be able to elect to have a rezoning application to be contingent on the request to amend the future of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan if to be heard concurrently. If the applicant proceeds in that manner, the LDC will provide provisions that the review of the Land Development Code will be reviewed for compliance with the proposed concurrent future land use comprehensive plan amendment. Available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to LDC 25-0401? Right, next item. Mr. Grady.
Next item is LDC 25-0402, maximum building height definition. This text amendment will clarify how the maximum building height is measured to be consistent with the Florida Building Code. The LDC currently defines height differently than the Florida Building Code. Therefore, this proposed amendment will align those two to simplify and avoid conflicts in review of building permits to have the definition meet the Florida Building Code definition. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Would anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, Mr. Grady, last item.
The last item is minor changes to plan development revisions. This text amendment will update the administrative modifications to approve planned development districts that an administrator has authorized to approve. This amendment will allow two modifications to be approved administratively. The first one being changes to PD site plans that include the configuration and adjustment of internal driveways and/or parking areas that do not affect setbacks, buffers, side access, or any other approved conditions or standards, and the conversion of mobile home units to single-family conventional units. Available for any questions. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to LDC 25-0404? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue. Again, the adoption public hearing for these amendments will be on May 8. At this time, we'll adjourn tonight's LDC amendment public hearing. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of text and map amendments to the comprehensive plan. The board will also consider the adoption of small-scale future land use map amendments with related rezonings. I'll now ask the Planning Commission staff to introduce tonight's first item.
Thank you. For the record, Melissa Linehard, Planning Commission Staff. Our first item tonight is A1, and Ms. Alexis Myers will be presenting that item. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission Staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2309 located at 1005 North Kingsway Road. This is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment that is 14.47 acres. The applicant is requesting the change to future land use category from residential four to a community mixed use 12. The site is located within the limits of the Sefton Mango Community Plan. It is also in the urban service area. As you can see on the map, this plan amendment is on the northeast quadrant of the intersection of East US Highway 92 and North Kingsway Road. Directly to the west, across North Kingsway Road, is Burnett Middle School. To the north of the school is Hillgong Bottom Park. Further in the northwest corner is Interstate 4. South of the school is light commercial uses. Here's the east view of the property from East US Highway 92. The subject site is on the right side and currently vacant. The large buildings in the background belong to the middle school. Here is the west view of the property from East US Highway 92. The subject site is on the left side. Here is a quick shot of the intersection of East US Highway 92 and North Kingsway Road. The subject site is on the right side. And this is the south view of the property from North Kingsway Road. The subject site is on the left side. And finally, here is the north view of the property from North Kingsway Road. This is the subject site, and you can see some residential uses surrounding it. The site is currently designated as residential four with public quasi-public to the west, residential one to the north corner, and other residential four designations surrounding it. This is the wide view to show how close the site is to the urban service area boundary, which is the blue line. Beyond the blue line, the boundary, you will find some agricultural uses. The applicant is requesting the change to future land use category to community mixed use 12. As you can see, the color on the map has darkened to show the updated category shift. The proposed amendment would potentially allow for the consideration of commercial intensive and manufacturing uses under the CMU 12 designation. Non-residential uses would be subject to a locational criteria. Planning Commission staff have reviewed the proposed application and found it to be inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, including Policy 16.2 relating to the gradual transitions of density and intensities between uses, Policy 1.4, 16.1, 16.3, and 16.8 relating to integrated and compatible development, and Policy 18.1, as well as Policy 12-1 of the Sefton Mango Community Plan relating to compatibility within the community plan. I'm also sorry. The item was sent out for agency review and received no objections. With that, the Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment, HCCPA 2309, be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2309.
All right, thank you. Applicant here.
Which one is it? The first one? Future land use? Yes, correct. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451 in St. Petersburg. This site is located, as the staff indicated to you, in the east part of the county, Sefton Mango. This is a site next to the Burnett Middle School. Very importantly and critically, the crux of this request will allow for a veterans' community living center at 200,000 square feet. This would be a Veterans, federal Veterans Administration, US Department of Veteran Affairs Community Living Center, which is a little bit of a new facility they provide, which provides both long-term and short-term care for our veterans. And I'd like to introduce four persons who are here this evening. They are representatives of the veterans community in Hillsborough County. They'll speak with you as well. Here's the crux of this issue, Commissioners. We are only simply adding one new option to this request. Currently, the entitlement is for 156,816 square foot of unregulated, uncontrolled commercial uses. All we're doing tonight is adding a second option for the Veterans Administration living facility. And remember, particularly reminding the new Commissioners, the Planning Commission and Board for the Future Land Use Map do not consider, they cannot consider, excuse me, or include and evaluate the companion rezoning. So their perspective is for the complete wide use of 156,000 square feet of commercial uses under CMU 12, which is intensive, but the zoning and companion restricts it to one new use. So when you look at the side of the future land use map, you see that's R4, but the PQP right next door is public semi-public. In this particular case, it's 733 students and staff, but the PQP allows the consideration of major existing and programmed government-owned facilities along with other public uses, which is pretty much what we're requesting today. It is an unbridled, unlimited, and unrestrained density and impacts that are assigned on a case-by-case basis across the street. So we feel that there's a lot of consistency and compatibility with the future land use right across the street. This is the original zoning plan, just for your reference. So when you look at the zoning map as well, that reflects the future land use map, which is a tremendous amount of intensity all along US Highway 19, and, excuse me, Highway 92. It is also a state principal arterial roadway, carries anywhere from 12,000 to 9,000 vehicles per day, and is very intensive already in terms of commercial uses. Very importantly, the Sefton Mango Community Plan says commercial development should be directed 92 and recognize commercial character of US 92 and support infill development in the urban service area. So that will present much more under the zoning basis. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Tom Fletcher. Live at 10016 Kendal Drive in Riverview, Florida. I'm here sort of representing the Veteran Council of Hillsborough County. We all are very solidly behind this amendment to the comprehensive plan for Hillsborough County. As you know, the Veteran Council's goal is to support activities and services that enhance the life and well-being of veterans who call Hillsborough County home. By approving this amendment, you will help Veterans Administration create another very special home for ailing and aging veterans in our community. According to the US Department of Veterans Affairs, unlike normal nursing homes in the past, a community living center basically resembles home as much as possible. The whole different ballgame. There are activities for veterans of all ages. There are family-friendly places for visiting. Veterans are invited to decorate their rooms, and they can even bring their pets. There's a place where veterans can receive nursing home level care, which includes help with activities of daily living and skilled nursing facilities. The mission of a community living center is to restore each veteran to his or her highest level of well-being. It's also to prevent declines in health and to provide comfort at the end of life. Although there are several properties in Hillsborough County competing for this very special project, we believe this location will be the likely choice when the dust settles. By the way, the VA point of contact for this project passed on some good news to me yesterday. The budget package for this project was released to several congressional committees for their review and consideration. That's the next, that's the step right before funding happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to the item?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Odell. I reside at 12205 Shelby Drive, Riverview, Florida. I'm here representing Hillsborough County veterans, helping veterans. I work with needy homeless and disabled veterans every day, and I can tell you, there is definitely a need for this. And the whole idea of putting this where it is, it would be a very easy access for them to be able to get from there to our hospital, and their need of transportation and all that would be easy to get there even with all the traffic that's now in our streets with cluttering up everything. Because it's just 92, I'm sure everybody knows where that's at and where the hospital's at, it just makes a lot of sense to have that in that location, to be able to get them moved there when something happens and they need to get to our hospital. These people have been kicked around and have had a lot of issues, and a lot of people that are veterans don't have the monies to be able to go to other places as they get older, and that's why the VA does this, and I can't think of a better place for it to be, this location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Joe Lido spoke at the last hearing. He could not be here this evening, and he submitted a letter in the record. If I may be allowed to read this letter to you on his behalf.
Quickly, Mr. Pressman.
Yes. Mr. Lido is the Chair of Military Affairs for the Central Hillsborough County Chamber of Commerce, and he noted in his letter and his statements that this letter is strong support for this county application. We cannot understate the need and demand and service this facility will provide for outstanding veterans, would allow our loved ones to remain in their community while getting tremendous services. The use would be extremely quiet, generates minimum trips, and would be conducive and fit well with the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll hold off on the adoption, on vote on the adoption until after we hear the rezoning. At this time, the clerk, if you could administer the oath to anyone that's going to speak to this item.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated.
Mr. Grady.
Commissioners, the next item, A2, is the companion rezoning associated with item A1. The Commissioner's request is for a major modification of existing planned developments located at the northeast corner of the intersection of North Kingsway and US 92 in the Sefton area. It's a major modification of 14.47 acre parcel at the immediate corner of the intersection. The request is to add a second development option for 200,000 square feet for accommodation and nursing facility and community residential home. Based on the surrounding development pattern consisting with the commercial uses along 92 and the school across the street, and the applicant meeting code requirement buffering and screening and meeting setback requirements for, based on the building height, staff did find this compatible with the surrounding development pattern and recommend approval, subject to approval of the companion Comprehensive Plan Amendment for a CMU 12 to provide for the .31 FAR that's being requested as part of this application. I would note that the Planning Commission did, however, did find this request inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and the hearing officer recommended denial. Staffs available for any questions. Thank you.
Applicant come forward.
Yeah, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue Fourth, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451, St. Petersburg. So as you're aware, this is the companion rezoning, again, for the Veterans Administration site. Mike and Thomas want to appreciate you being here, and you guys do great work in the community. We appreciate you coming down. Again, Sefton Mango area, 14.42 acres. This is across the street at Burnett Middle School. Again, critical element to keep the current entitlement of 156,000 square feet of commercial. Add the option is all we're doing tonight in rezoning for the Veterans Administration CLC. I think you have understanding what the CLC is at this point. Here's a critical point. Per your staff report, the difference in uses between the current entitlement and what we're proposing as the veterans' facility is reduction of 14,486 24-hour two-way volume trips. That's 946 AM peak and a reduction of 1,200 on the PM. Staff report notes it's a large-scale CG zoning district uses would permit, under the commercial now, large-scale retail, domestic car sales, 24 hours per day, freestanding emergency room, major minor vehicle repair, tire repair. Obviously, this would be a tremendously better fit when you look at the tight surrounding residential area, as you can see to the north and to the west. And Commissioners, this is another really important stat. Believe it or not, between all the zoning and land use notices we had to do, we sent out 482 notices over multiple times. That's a lot of notices to this community, and not a single closely located neighbor in that notice radius came out in opposition. Now, there's a few ladies here, I assume, who spoke at the last hearing, who are outside that notice area, but that's an important and critical perspective we want to make you aware of. Development Services support, transportation is no objection. Issue is the major mod. This use of the veterans' facility is considered to be a multifamily use under the code, so it is evaluated as a multifamily use. And to give you a better idea, this is some pictures from some of the CLCs across the country. You can see it has that ALF sort of assisted living facility element to it, but also you begin to see the more intensive care that is provided at these uses. As you can see here, you can see the hospital above the bed for getting patients up and out. You can see the track that goes into the bathroom, assisted in the bathroom, and of course, as a veterans' facility, they have, want to make the veterans feel at home. Current future land use map you've seen allows hospitals, allows major governmental facilities, as you've heard, under the PQP. Looking at the zoning map, it's almost entire corridor is CG, including this site, which the current entitlement is CG. You can see that extends along the entire corridor of Highway 92, which is, again, a state principal arterial roadway. Zoning staff recommendation notes that the zoning area consists of single-family residential, commercial, and residential support uses, classified as a multifamily use. Compatibility of CLC meets commercial location, or excuse me, commercial location waiver, and that's based upon the site being very quiet, it's all interior, uses are elderly, veterans, and veterans recuperating, the low trip rate, it's a multifamily use by code compared to the 156,000 commercial. And Commissioners, that's very important because the zoning staff took a perspective of looking at those two options. And now, speaking for them, I'm sure that's why they accepted and gave us support. The Planning Commission, and not a complaint, it's just a perspective that they presented, did not include that perspective between the two. And that's a critical way to look at this proposal, because those options are the only way to look at it. And I will tell you, in terms of ZHM, there's not much there from the ZHM. I wish I could tell you that, reading through it, there's a construction of why it's good and why it's bad, but there really is not, other than to say, I did not see the ZHM as well compared to say, okay, commercial is allowed, this is going to be destructive and imposing to those residents right up against this property versus this veterans' facility, which is quiet, interior, tremendously lower trips, I think it was 14,000 trips on a 24-hour basis. That comparison I did not see. So I think that's a critical difference why zoning is supporting it. Planning Commission, with all due respect, they do a great job. They looked at it differently. Importantly, under the Sefton Mango Community Plan, I want to read these again. A main goal is commercial development should be directed to US 92. One of the strategies, recognize commercial character of US 92. Those are two critical components of the community plan in that review. Also, Comprehensive Plan 2.1.6 notes, offer incentives for higher land use densities and intensities along transit emphasis corridors, which I've shown you that this is a state arterial roadway and carries a lot of vehicles and is called Highway 92. Policy 16.2 requires gradual transitions of intensities. We believe that this would provide a buffer and screening to the residents along Highway 92, which will be expanded, and there are plans to do that, and from the noise of the Burnett School. So when you look at the Planning Commission, the ZHM analysis, again, I don't see the comparison. comparable to allowable commercial. We don't believe that it fully evaluates the PDQ, which is right across the street, which is the neighboring property to the west, that we provide a transition. So with that, again, we appreciate the veterans' folks being here, and I want to place emphasis again of the outstanding non-communication of the citizens who have been noticed in the radius, which I think speaks loudly to the proposal thus before you tonight. So with that, we appreciate your attention, happy to answer your questions you might have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any proponent testimony?
Just two little points. You know, the VA...
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Fletcher, 10016 Kinder Drive, Riverview, Florida. Keep in mind a little bit here that VA facilities nationwide typically put these nursing homes and community living centers nearby of VA medical centers. Well, that's not possible here. The VAs recognize that, they have changed their strategy, they're moving outside of the realm and the area surrounding VA medical centers for these kinds of locations, these kinds of facilities. It's going to really provide a much better opportunity for the veterans who want to live in that type of facility and uncrowded kind of condition. So this is a big factor. And the VA is really on the precipice of really committing a strong, strong value to this particular program throughout the country. So this is something that would really be beneficial to the community. We've got a growing population of veterans in this county, which is unlike a lot of other counties with the aging populations. Hillsborough County seems to be keeping right up with that 100,000 or so veterans in our community. It's one of the few that has not shown a decline over the years. So there's a definite need, so hope you can give proper consideration to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponent testimony?
Michael Dell, 12205 Shelby Drive, Riverview, Florida. Just wanted to emphasize...
Hold on one second, sir. Ms. Lundgren?
Sorry, but Mr. Odell is not a party of record for the rezoning, so he's, don't have him on the list as allowed to speak.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry, I do have him, I apologize. Got a lot to...
What, you got a second stash over there?
He has a second chance. Sorry about that.
Please continue, sir. My apologies.
As I was saying, it was brought up before about the traffic, influx of traffic in and out of this facility. These people are there to stay, they're not going in and out like you would with an apartment complex or any of that stuff. The majority of the traffic that you would have going in and out of here would just be the employees, and, you know, it's not like they're going in and out all day long. So the impact, as far as more traffic in that area, would be a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in support?
Grace McComas, 805 Old Darby Street, Sefner. Commissioners and Mr. Pressman, it does not matter where we live in our county, we have the right to fight for our community. I'm opposed to CPA 2309 and the zoning 241110 request. The area is obviously residential. No greater density by comp plan amendment change or by rezoning should be allowed in this suburban transitional area. To this date, I am unable to support the VA center because nowhere in Optics Record is there any documentation stating that the bid for this property to have the VA, either a care center, a nursing home, homeless and home, or extended care facility, has not been verified by the VA, and Mr. Pressman has not shown any documentation, or is it in Optics? Since the applicant did seek the restriction that a VA hospital would be the only permissible use, other than the CG zoning the property has had since the 030753 approval of the PD behind it, they should be held to their own request. CG properties, or CG commercial, should provide a benefit to our community and the surrounding residents and neighbors in this quiet suburban area and as specified in the community plan and the comprehensive plan. I'm opposed to the variance as being requested for distance to single-family homes, the residential style, and the stipulation of 50-foot building height made to the planning commission. These items are established in the comprehensive plan and the Sefner Mango Community Plan, which states building height will be a maximum of 35 feet. Goal 2 states, enhance community character and ensure quality residential and non-residential development. Goal 3 does direct commercial development to the US Highway 92 and Martin Luther King Boulevard corridors, as Mr. Pressman says, but it also states specifically west of State Road 579. This information has not been given to you correctly. This goal 3 also states the buildings would be appropriate in height and compatible with appearance in accordance to the Sefner Mango Community Plan and Comp Plan. We would like to add to the original conditions due to the suburban residential lifestyle we desire and stated in the community plan in 2010. No fast food or drive-through fast food, no vape or marijuana stores or clinics, and definitely no gas stations, car repair shops, car sales, or car storage. FDOT was the first person that they had to speak to about this property, and they have given them many, many stipulations and things that they would have to go through in order to even have a car lot. But we don't want it, so that would be wonderful. We're here to ask you for your strong support for your community. I pray you are listening, and we use the guidance of your staff and the zoning hearing master, and vote to protect the citizens, their lifestyle, and expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else in opposition?
I submitted Elmo yesterday within the time period, Michelle Van Loon, 130 Alina Sky Drive. As noted, we may be just outside the 300-foot notice area, but I ask all of you to think what is just outside 300 feet beyond your door, and are you impacted by that development? As depicted by Mr. Pressman on his diagram, this is a general commercial and commercial intensive corridor. CMU 12 is around the interchange with the highway. Consistent with the comp plan, you can see that it steps down in densities as you move away from the interchange from the highway. This is Amazon, it has a distribution center, it is only SMU 6, not CMU 12. It is transitioning in density again as you move away from the interchange with the To give you an example of context, based on just bulk and square footage, at existing density, you could have a building of 157,000 square feet, as has been discussed. At the requested density, that would go up to 315,000 square feet. I believe that's a little bit more than what we would call promoting infill development. The Amazon Distribution Center only has an FAR of .35. The actual FAR with this request at CMU 12 would go to .5. It is a .5 in a C of residential 4. The actual building at the Amazon Distribution Center only takes up 26.7% of the lot. If you approve this, we could end up with an equivalent of 4.8 neighborhood Walmarts on that site, or three and a half regular Walmarts. We would not consider a density of 15% greater than an Amazon Distribution Center in a school zone as consistent with the community and the neighborhood. Again, the planning commission voted unanimously as inconsistent. Regarding rezoning 241110, I am also married to a 20-year Army veteran, and so we have no issue with a VA facility. We are not against assisted living facility or any other type, but we have yet to see the applicant provide us any documentation about why this building has to be 28% greater than 156,000 square feet that he's currently allowed, or why it has to be 50 feet high. He has only showed us a simple page from the webpage of the VA, nothing including those requirements. Our biggest point is that the scale and structure, it's not that this is only incompatible with our neighborhood, it is incompatible with all 196 assisted living facilities within 15 miles of our zip code. According to the HealthFinderFL.gov, at 200,000 square feet, this would be the largest assisted living facility, and I'm repeating it, 200,000 square feet, it will be larger than all 196 assisted living facilities within 15 square miles of us. This facility, if approved, would have a 50-foot building next to 22 single-family residential lots. In all the pretty pictures and the PowerPoint that Mr. Pressman presented, there was not one exterior picture of the building. If you go into the official record of the PDF, on page 222 are examples of VA living facilities built in Florida, and they all look just like big hospital institutional buildings. These types of facilities are not compatible, not only with our neighborhood, but actually the entire Sefner Mango area. When you look at the chart that your planning commission put up, there is no CMU 12 anywhere on that chart. Thank you for your consideration of the local community and residents of Sefner.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Good evening, you have two minutes.
Michelle Miles, 412 Vinekeeper Court, Sefner. I strongly oppose RZ 241110 for development because based on the Hillsborough County Water Atlas and inputting the applicant's address of 1005 North Kingsway, it is located within the Hillsborough County Pemberton Creek watershed, across the street from the recently flooded Shangri-La subdivision. A countywide water model migration and integration swift mud stormwater studies planning is scheduled for mid-2025. The project will create a combined basin for Hillsborough River, Duck Pond, Eastlake, Tampa Bypass, Canal, and Pemberton Baker watershed to EPA stormwater management model, as well as a migrate modeling models into the SCADA system. This project is on the county CIP website. There is a discrepancy of what's happened in our community. Many people flooded that have never flooded before and were recently devastated after Hurricane Milton. Hours and days after Hurricane Milton passed, 12 homes along Chastain Road and Vinewood Drive were flooded. You can see people on a canoe in photos that I submitted at the zoning hearing master. Four days, a couple that had been living there for over 49 years and had just celebrated 50 years of marriage, home was flooded and their home has never flooded before. August, November 2024, two different FDOT pre-application meetings were held. The first meeting was to expand Evo Motors used car lot. That leads me to believe the true intent of this request is to expand Evo Motor Cars Lot and not a veterans' housing. So please do not allow lobbying with a claim of building a veterans' housing.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Pressman, you have opportunity for five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you Commissioners and for the citizens that are here. And let me say this very, very clearly. Any citizen coming forward are important comments, but part of my job is to make you aware of who's speaking to you. Well, these fine ladies, Michelle, who spoke about this being her neighborhood, driving distance from this site to her home is 3.94 miles. Ms. McComas, who's a very nice lady, her home is 1.48 miles driving distance, and Michelle, her driving distance is 1.73 miles. So these are not citizens who are impacted directly by the use. We sent out the 493 notices five, six times to all these citizens, plus the big yellow signs out there for months. That's who we've not heard from, that is who does not have opposition tonight. But interestingly enough, as you're all aware, for campaigns, and when you're campaigning, there's a lot of scare tactics thrown out, and you've heard a little bit about that tonight. When Michelle spoke, she spoke about 300,000 or 400,000 square feet to be built on this site. That's wrong. That's incorrect, because as I've shown you, the companion zoning restricts the veterans to 200,000 square feet. That's it. That's incorrect information. She also noted that the building and the proximity to the residents would be a difficulty. Why I would suggest to you, and why you're not hearing from these residents, because the residents would prefer to have a nice, quiet, low-trip use that may be a little bit higher versus a Goodyear or Tyers Choice, working 10, 15, 20 feet from their property line 24 hours a day. I don't think anyone would like that. They would consider the VA use a much better use. Or McDonald's, or Burger King, these are all permitted there today. So this would be a much lesser use, a much less impacting use. Again, the code considers it to be a multi-family use. So in regard to the comments you've heard this evening, we think it's overwhelmingly positive. We've explained to you the perspective of how the staffs look at these issues, we brought forward the veterans' community, and we brought forward indirectly the nearby neighbors who are impacted by this use. We appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Alexis Myers, Planning Commission Staff. The subject site is located in the residential 4 of future land use category. The proposed major modification is running concurrently with HCPA 2309, which proposes to amend the future land use designation to community mixed-use 12. Based upon the applicant requesting the rezoning run concurrently with the plan amendment, as such, Planning Commission staff reviewed the requested rezoning under the proposed future land use category. It is located in the urban service area and within the limits of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. The proposed major modification does not meet the intent of future land use element, Policy 1.4 on compatibility, and Objective 16 on neighborhood protection. Residential support uses are allowed, however, the CMU 12 category would allow for a development that is out of scale and not compatible for the area as it is surrounded by residential 4. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed major modification inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the proposed conditions by the Development Services Department.
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed major modification to retain the existing approvals of Plan Development 03753 as option A, while adding option B to the non-residential component to allow development of the property with a 200,000-square-foot building with 150,000 square feet for use as a community residential home type C with up to 206 residents and 50,000 square feet for use as a nursing, convalescent, and extended care facility. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the LDC Section 6.11.28, which requires a type C community residential home not be located within a 500-foot radius of properties within any non-agricultural RSC, single-family zoning district. The applicant's further requesting a waiver of LDC Section 6.1128E, which requires the community residential home type C facility to be designed and built to appear as similar to a residential structure as possible. Development Services staff found the proposed option B development is not viewed as more intense than uses currently allowed under the subject properties PD 2003753 zoning. Staff found that the property is situated at a commercial intersection, and the existing approvals allow non-residential uses that are more intense than a community residential home type C, which is considered to be a multi-family use. Staff found the proposed option B development is compatible with the surrounding area and concluded that the major modification is approvable. As Ms. Myers explained, Planning Commission staff found the proposed major modification would allow development that is out of would allow development that is out of scale and incompatible with the adjacent residential uses to the north and east. The zoning hearing master's recommendation was for denial of the proposed major modification to the plan development.
Okay, the first discussion vote will be on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Commissioner Winstall.
Commissioner Miller, I'm happy to defer to you if you wanted to speak first at your district. You good? Okay, okay, okay. I don't have all 22 community plans memorized, forgive me, in Hillsborough County, but I did kind of quickly look up, and if somebody could clarify, it does seem, it does seem to read that the US 92 growth that was presented is factually promoted to be west of 579 that was presented by, I think, Ms. Lone. Is that how I'm reading this? It's, you know, we have so many of them, it's impossible to have them all memorized, I understand, for staff, but I want to understand, because it was such a big point that was made, I think it's helpful for the board. But if I just went into their community plan, and it only references 579 six times, and it does seem to suggest that it's to the west of 579, not all the way down US 92.
Thank you for the question, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission Staff. For the record, that is correct. And another thing that I pointed out in the commissioner briefings is, though the Sefnar Mango Community Plan is supportive of development and redevelopment and infill, it's in the urban service area, which the site is. It also is very close to the rural area line, to the urban service area line, it's to the north and to the east. So at that point, our policy direction and the policy direction in the community plan is to taper to less intense as you get closer to the rural area, and that's what the community plan says, is that it supports the infill, but it also strikes a balance between what is already there and recommending comparable densities and intensities to what's already around it.
Okay. Thank you very much. The second question, which land use can be very complicated, but none of the speakers seemed to recognize, and I was clarifying this beforehand, that I just want to, I want to say this very clearly for everyone, there are already about 160,000 square foot of entitlements on this property that could be broke ground on. And that was zoned in 2003, 22 years ago. Okay, I'm getting a head nod. So I just, no one seemed to, no one seemed to really clearly state that, and I want to be clear, that 160,000 square foot facility could be put on this property.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, because that's a, it's a really large facility. What is, what is the need for, if we approve it to CMU 12 today, and I also had concerns about, I have never heard about this veterans' facility thing. As everybody in the audience might know, I am a combat veteran of both of the most recent wars, so I'm extremely sensitive to the issue, but I also don't want to, I don't believe in, just because it's a veteran issue, I don't believe in just blindly voting yes on things, even myself. So what I don't want to do, especially with the unstable environment of the federal government right now, who knows what's going to go on with funding, they're having radical changes at the VA. I also could not identify a current project. I guess it sounds like it's still going through committees, so we really have no idea whether or not this is going to get approved. So if we approved the veterans' facility today and it fell through, which is an extremely large possibility, what does this expose the community to potentially, what's, what could this expose this lot to falling out and now being able to be built?
So if this, excuse me, if the zoning were approved, there would be two options, the existing commercial option or the VA facility. Under the zoning request, it wouldn't open up any other opportunities. However, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment approval would allow for consideration of greater densities and greater square footage than what's being requested today. It would need to come back before the board through a plan development modification to approve that, but that would be something that would be enabled with the Comprehensive Plan change.
Did you have something else?
I do, thank you. Adam is completely right about that, it would introduce greater intensities and densities. The density increase would go from four units an acre to 12 units an acre, and that also correlates to bed count. So when you're talking about an assisted living facility or another, what the Comprehensive Plan calls a residential support use, we're very supportive of residential support uses near residential populations, they can be served. Those are things like churches, daycares, assisted living facilities, those types of things. So the Planning Commission report was not opposed to the actual use, it's the scale of the use that would be allowed with the increase in the plan amendment with Community Mixed Use 12.
Could they do 160,000 square foot facility that's already there right now? I will just say that I've been really vocal, and we've all been very reasonable, been being supportive of controlled and managed growth throughout the community, but, and I will always be very supportive of any veterans' efforts, and if it was already approved, and we knew that was, it's going to be on this lot, then I would be willing to override or be more helpful. But right now, I'm extremely uncomfortable because there's too many unknown variables about this specific lot. And if it was further down the road with this facility, then I would be all in on it, but we're not there, and we could be jeopardizing the community unknowingly in this situation. So right now, I'm uncomfortable with the item. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, sir. So my questions were along the same lines. I actually had my briefing late yesterday, and understand that these, I'm happy to have some clarification if somebody can do that, but my question is specifically around, it's in the process for the VA, which is a bid process, is that correct, Mr. Pressman? Yes? That's correct. So it's in a bid process. So my question would be, I think, for Mr. Gormley, if we approve CPA 2309, we're opening us up to that future. So if he, if this, if they don't get the bid, and I would love to really support a VA, we need this facility in the county. I was very excited, but I'm actually very versed on VA facilities, and I had never heard of it. I was floored when I heard that this was a potential in my district, and I didn't know about it. So that tells me it's not very far along, but I didn't have enough hours to do more research on it. So if this doesn't get approved, they would have to come back to us with a plan. At that point, I would be a little peeved, right? Like, were we tricked into sort of doing this? I know that's not the intent, but it might feel a little bit like that, not just to us, but to the community. We don't have any recourse at that point if we approve 2309 to fight it, is that correct?
That's correct. If you, if the Comprehensive Plan 2309 was, were approved, that would govern any future development of the site or any future requested changes to the plan development zoning.
Okay, so with that said, we are effectively killing their deal for potential to have a VA site here, because they're not going to win in a bid if they don't have the ability to move forward on this property. Correct?
As I understand it, that would be correct, it's factors of each site is evaluated on many, many different factors.
Do you know how many sites are being considered? Like, I feel like there's this whole gap of information that's missing. How many sites are being considered in Florida? Is it anywhere in the southeast? Like, what are we looking at here? Like, how competitive are we?
As I understand it, it is the Tampa Bay area.
Okay.
And they are in final stages of reviewing sites, which I've been told could be as early as next week.
Okay, and how many sites are they reviewing?
I don't know that. There's not a lot of sites that can meet their requirements, so I'm sure there's not many sites that they're reviewing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeta.
Yes, I believe supporting our veterans is our duty, and their service to our country has been invaluable, and I believe that the applicant is providing a much-needed service to our local veterans, and for that reason, I'm supporting this and actually make a move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion to approve CPA 2309 by Commissioner Cameron Sepeta. Do we have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's really not, this vote cannot be misinterpreted to be about the VA facility, because that's not what this is about. But I have confirmed that this item could be continued, and I believe that that's the appropriate measure, I just got a lot of head nods about that. What I don't know is, by how much time do we need to continue this item? But I would like more information. I would like to reach out to our congressmen and women, I know that I can get quick responses from one about this, so, Mr. Gormley, do you have any ideas on the timeframe?
So the next scheduled hearing date is May 8th.
Okay. And does my, is that enough time for everybody? Commissioner?
Well, I'll, I'm going to say, I was going down, going to go down the exact same road as you, I'll second your motion. My thought, I had another question, though. Could, look, if some sort of decision on a site is imminent, I'm wondering if the decision could get made while this thing is in limbo, which would actually be helpful, because it would give us some real certainty about what we were actually voting on. So while, if you want to do it in May, that would be fine, but I wonder if maybe giving it a little more time might provide for the time to get actual clarification on what the VA's intention is.
Mr. Gormley, we can always continue at that time as well, right?
We could continue at that time, just confirm June 12th is the next public hearing date that's available.
Mr. Pressman, do you have a, what are your thoughts on what we're discussing here?
All I know is the federal government, we've been working on this for a long time, moves very slow. You're thinking June at this point?
June 12th will be a hearing, gives it about two months or so. And to this point, it can always be continued later.
Okay. Commissioner Winstall, I think you still have the floor.
I think that we start with June the 12th. So I will motion to continue this item until the June the 12th hearing. And Ms. Lone, and I don't remember the rest of your names, apologize, I'll make sure and reach out to you as well about any new info.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Winstall, Second Commissioner Cohen to continue CPA 2309 until our June, June what, 12th? June 12th hearing date. Okay, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Gormley, I guess it'd be appropriate to continue the RZ as well to June 12th?
Yes.
If we have a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Winstall, Second Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote on RZ 24-1110.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. Next item.
The next item is Item A3, and that will also be presented by Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Alexis Myers again. I'm here to present HCCPA 2426, located at 6625 County Road 579. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 38.29 acres. The applicant is proposing to change the future land use category from residential two to light industrial planned. Here is the general location map. The site is in the rural area and within the limits of the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The subject site is north of Pruitt Road, south of Davis Pool Road, and east of County Road 579. There is agricultural and single-family uses currently on the site. Agriculture is also to the east and north, while single-family uses extend to the west, north, and south. Now we have some pictures. This is looking east of County Road 579 to the subject site from Innisheard Road. This is looking north from Pruitt Road to the subject site. This is looking west of the intersection of County Road 579 and Pruitt Road. The subject site is out of frame to the right. And this is looking east of County Road 579 onto the subject site. There are currently single-family uses and agriculture on the subject site. Currently, the future land use designation is residential two. Other future land use categories shown in this map include residential one and residential four to the west, north, and south, and agricultural estate one to 2.5 to the east. The applicant again is requesting to change the future land use designation to, I'm sorry, to light industrial planned. Next are the impacts. The proposed amendment will result in the increase of non-residential uses, the elimination of residential uses, and introduce industrial uses in a predominantly residential and agricultural area. The proposed request is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan relating to the rural area, relationship to the future land use map, and future land use categories. It is also consistent with future land use element Objective 16 on neighborhood protection, and Goal 12 and Objective 12-1 of the community design component, as well as the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2426.
All right, thank you. Applicant here.
Good evening.
Good evening. It was 20, it's 2426. Yeah. And then where's the?
Oh, you're just going to slide it.
This one?
Yeah, this is going to be this one.
Yeah, okay.
There you go. You have to slide.
Okay. Can I just use this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Gina Grimes with the law firm of Bradley, Erent, Bolt &amp; Cummings, were located at 1001 Water Street in Tampa, Florida, and I'm here this evening representing Providence Partners Real Estate in this application for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment from RZ2 to Light Industrial Planned. It's not working. Okay. The Planning Commission held their hearing back in November of last year, and I'm very pleased to report that there was a unanimous recommendation of approval for this comp plan amendment, and also, in addition, no other reviewing agencies and departments had objections. Here's a general location map of the site, and you'll see there's a broad mix of uses up and down the Mango Road corridor that this site fronts. As mentioned before, it's a 38-acre site. The existing use on the site is a sewage treatment facility. I know that the Planning Commission mentioned that it's agricultural, and this is deemed an agricultural use under the Land Development Code, but in fact, as you can see, based on these pictures, the existing use is already an industrial-like use. So why is this location appropriate for this comp plan category to LIP? Well, the answer is in the language of the comp plan itself. LIP is a designation that is appropriate in those areas in the county, potentially suitable for industrial activities, but located outside of concentrated industrial areas. And also, with the use of a site plan, would be beneficial to ensure land use compatibility, and that's exactly what we have here. And as you'll see, the reason I say that is that in 2022, the Planning Commission conducted a study of the Mango Road corridor, and that study was done at the direction of the Board of County Commissioners. In that study, the Planning Commission recognized that the larger parcels along 579, north of I-4, were predominantly developed with non-residential uses, and that even included some heavy industrial uses. They also noted the presence of the Taylor Road landfill, and that presented concerns to them about future residential development in the area due to potential well contamination. Also, I would add that within the last five years, the Board of County Commissioners have approved two Comprehensive Plan Amendments to the same comp plan category of LIP. One was approved in 2018, and another in 2022, again, to the same comp plan category for light industrial planned. As you know, we're submitting a companion rezoning, and we are going to limit the industrial uses through that rezoning that can be used on the site. In summary, because the existing use is already industrial-like, this comp plan amendment to LIP is consistent with the existing commercial and industrial development trend in the area. The proposed uses in the PD will limit the number and type of light industrial and type of light industrial uses that can be used. And then the PD plan will address this again in the next hearing, ensures buffers and compatibility.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes.
Thank you. And I'll be available for any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll hold off on voting on this comprehensive plan amendment until after the rezoning. At this time, I ask the clerk to swear in anyone that's going to speak to this rezoning, 24-1135.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
Mr. Grady?
The next item is a companion rezoning to the comprehensive plan amendment. It's a rezoning PD 24-1135. As noted, this is at the northeast corner of County Road 579 and Pruitt, Pruitt Road in Tenota Sasa. The request is resoned from ASC 1 to RSC, NRC 4 MH to plan development. The plan development would allow warehousing, distribution, light industrial, and open storage accessory to those uses in manufacturing, process, and assembly, based on the surrounding development pattern, also in the larger area. Staff did find this compatible based on the site plan provided and also under the consideration of the associated light industrial plan, comprehensive plan designation requested. Again, staff did find it approval. Planning Commission found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the hearing officer recommended approval. Available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant, come forward.
Here you go. You have it signed.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Gina Grimes with the law firm of Bradley, Erent, Bolton, Cummings, 1001 Water Street, Tampa, Florida. I'm here again representing Providence Partners Real Estate, which is the applicant on this rezoning from ASC 1 and RSC 4 to PD. The proposed project is a 532,000 square feet limited light industrial project. Development Services, as you heard, recommended that it's approvable. The Planning Commission staff also found it consistent with the comp plan, and the zoning hearing master recommended approval. You already heard our companion comp plan amendment. And in a little bit, I would like to go through a more specific or more detailed description of the surrounding area, more so than what I did in the comp plan amendment hearing. The subject property is at the northeast corner of the intersection of 579 Mango Road and Pruitt Road. It is two parcels comprising 38 acres. So, it is a very large site. And the reason that's important with a large site, 38 acres, not very often you see sites that large. We can provide larger setbacks with a site that large. We also can provide larger and better buffering and compatibility measures. With a large site and the square footage that we're proposing, we actually have a lower FAR than what you might ordinarily see. And then the other benefit to having a large site is that it allows us to dedicate and convey right-of-way to the county for transportation improvements. In fact, we are dedicating over, I believe it's 30 or 48,000 square feet of right-of-way, which is more than an acre to the county for the various transportation improvements that will be installed. As we, as I showed you in the comp plan amendment hearing, the existing use on the site is a sewage septic treatment facility. And again, that's deemed an agricultural use under the Land Development Code. But in fact, it really has impacts similar to that of an industrial use. There's more photos of the site, and you can see how this sewage treatment processing facility actually separate. I'm not going to go into the details, but it's a pretty intense use. Adjacent to the site, immediately to the east, is a yard trash processing facility, also deemed by the Land Development Code as an agricultural use, but obviously more intense than that. And so, with that, I want to just kind of go up and down, or go up the Mango Corridor and explain to you some of the existing uses that are already out there. And I've numbered the sites from 1 to 14. And I'll read to you what each site contains. Site 1 is an 80-acre RV dealership with open storage of vehicles and vehicle repair. Site 2 is two hotels. Site 3 is a 17-acre truck dealership with open storage of vehicles and vehicle repair. Site 4 is a convenience store, gas stations, and restaurants. Site 5 is a 40-acre, 48-acre RV park. Site 6, which is a large site, is the county landfill, Taylor Road landfill. Site 7 is a 25-acre concrete manufacturing plant. Site 8 is a 300,000-square-foot warehouse distribution facility. That's one of the previous comp plan amendments that this board approved to the LIP. Site 9 is the yard trash processing facility. 10 is a citrus grove and processing. 11 is a truck yard. 12 is a borrow pit. And 13 is the 19-acre Florida Gas Transmission Facility. And then 14 is a truck facility that's at the end of the terminus of Mango Road as it goes into US 301. And you can see that that's a substantial, an intensive facility there that exists already. I believe with, and I already covered the history of the area in the Planning Commission's and the study that they did in 2022. I covered that in the comp plan amendment hearing. And I think that the reason that you have a Planning Commission recommendation of approval is because of what I just showed you, the intense development that already exists in that area. Just going on, I also want to mention the Tenota Sasa Community Plan, even though it dates back 30, more than 30 years to 95, they even stated back then that the subject property, it abuts this intersection. But what they noted was that commercial uses along 579, south of Pruitt, to I-4 were appropriate for commercial. I already went over the, I went over the comp plan language. The PD proposal, let's talk about that a little bit more specifically. This LIP requires a PD, companion PD. In this companion PD, we've limited to four light industrial uses: warehouse, with or without distribution, wholesale, distribution, manufacturing, processing, and assembly, and potential accessory open storage. Again, it's up to 532,000 square feet. Even at that amount of square footage, with a site that's 32 acres, our FAR is .32, and that's less than half of the maximum square footage permitted under the LIP. As you already know, the residential uses are not appropriate given the proximity to the Taylor Road landfill. Also, even though this is in a rural service area, it is already served by public water and wastewater. What my understanding is, that's because of the proximity to the landfill. Here's the zoning site plan. Here's some renderings that give you an idea of the type of facility that will be constructed. The building setbacks, these are our proposed compatibility measures. You can see we have extensive setbacks, more than most developments propose. 125 feet from Davis Poole Road on the north, 95 feet from the yard trash processing facility on the east, 90 feet from Pruitt Road, and then 94 feet from Mango Road. Our height is proposed at 54 feet, but, and that requires an additional two-to-one building setback. But with these extensive setbacks, we comply with that requirement. The buffering and screening on the north is more than what the code requires at 50 feet. On the east, we have 15 feet adjacent to the yard trash processing facility. And on the south, we have a 30-foot buffer along Pruitt Road. On the west, we only had an eight-foot buffer. And part of the reason for that is, and we had a request of variation, part of the reason for that is we were reducing it from 20 to eight to allow an 18-foot-wide area to be dedicated as future right-of-way for the Mango Road improvements that we'll be conducting. Within that right-of-way, we'll also be able to install a 10-foot-wide sidewalk and multi-purpose trail along Mango Road. There are no sidewalks along that side of Mango Road. So, with that, and with the addition of a very large stormwater pond on the west side of the site, we think that that variation is justified. Transportation, we are proposing two site access points. One full access, I'm sorry, three access points. One full access onto Mango Road, one full access onto Pruitt, and a right out only onto Pruitt. With that, we will be constructing northbound and southbound turn lanes on Mango, and eastbound and westbound turn lanes on Pruitt Road. We will not be proposing any access to Davis Poole Road. We will also be constructing various roadway improvements that include a 12-foot travel lane, 11-foot auxiliary lanes, again, that 10-foot-wide sidewalk, multi-purpose trail. And then we're going to be dedicating an acre of right-of-way for these transportation improvements. Again, Davis Poole Road, we're not going to have access to that road on the north, but we will dedicate five-foot of right-of-way and install a five-foot sidewalk. There's no sidewalks along that road. There's really no sidewalks in that entire area. And we had to ask for administrative variances, two design exceptions. The one administrative variances are for the access spacing of the driveways along Mango Road and along Pruitt Road. The design exceptions are for the substandard roads. Both administrative variance and the design exceptions were determined approvable by the county engineer. So, in conclusion, since the existing use is already a heavy industrial-type use, and the CPA to LIP is consistent with the existing commercial and industrial development in the surrounding area, and because we're proposing limited light industrial uses that will be an improvement over what exists there now, and with our screening and compatibility and setback measures, we would request your approval. Again, no reviewing agencies and departments had objections, and the zoning hearing master did recommend approval. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Any opponent testimony? Planning Commission?
Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. The subject site is located in the residential 2 future land use category. The proposed plan development is running concurrently with HCCPA 2426, which proposes to amend the future land use designation to light industrial plan, based upon the applicant requesting the rezoning run concurrently with the plan amendment. As such, Planning Commission staff reviewed the requested rezoning under the proposed future land use category. It is located in the rural area and within the limits of the Tenota Sasa Community Plan. The proposed plan development does not meet the intent, or I'm sorry, does meet the intent of future land use element Policy 1.4 on compatibility and Objective 16 on neighborhood protection, as it would allow for a development pattern that is compatible and comparable with the surrounding development along County Road 579. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed planning development, or plan development, consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan set with the proposed conditions by the Development Services Department.
All right, thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for a rezoning to a plan development to allow for the development of an industrial park with up to 532,000 square feet of buildings used for light industrial uses, including warehousing, distribution center, wholesale distribution, open storage, and manufacturing, processing, and assembly. The applicant had requested a design exception for Pruitt Road's substandard roadway improvements. The county engineer found the design exception approvable. The applicant requested a design exception for Mango Road, that's County Road 579, substandard roadway improvements, which was also found to be approvable. The administrative variance requested by the applicant for access spacing on Mango Road has also been found approvable, as well as Pruitt Road's administrative variance for access spacing. The Development Services Department concluded that the proposed plan development is compatible with the surrounding properties and in keeping with the general development pattern of the area. Staff concluded that the plan development rezoning request is approvable. The zoning hearing master concluded with a recommendation of approval of the request to rezone the property.
All right, can we have a motion to approve CPA 24-26?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Wilson. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Can we have a motion for RZ 24-1135?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Wilson. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now I'll go to the adoption hearing. Planning Commission, introduce the first item.
Yes, sir. I will introduce the first item, and I will be presenting it along with the next two items. Thank you for bringing up my presentation. Good evening. For the record, Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission staff. I'm going to be presenting HCCPA 23-15, Energy Industrial Park Secondary Uses. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated text amendment that applies to one geographical area of the county. The applicant is requesting to modify existing language under the Energy Industrial Park section of the future land use section that pertains to this area. The site is located in the urban service area and is not located within the limits of a community plan. The site is bordered generally by State Road 60 to the north, Dover Road to the west, Turkey Creek Road to the east, and Durant Road to the south. The Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category was created through a privately initiated text amendment in 2010. The policies were written based on the topography of the site, as well as the available energy-producing technology at the time. In 2022, there was a privately initiated text amendment that modified the language to allow for one energy-producing output, rather than the two that were originally approved in the language, so long as the output was doubled to achieve the vision of the Energy Industrial Park. This amendment was approved and is in effect today. This is one of two Energy Industrial Park privately initiated amendments in the October cycle. Both affect the same site, but each request has different applicants and property owners. Both amendments affect the entire property due to the changes in the text under this particular future land use category. Regarding the impacts, the current language states that all industrial, office, and commercial uses are limited to 700 acres in the northwest portion of the site along State Road 60, and commercial uses are not permitted along State Road 60 east of Turkey Creek, and that's the creek itself. The proposed language would remove northwest and replace that with north, and it would also delete along State Road 60 in the 700 acres language. It would also allow for retail and commercial uses east of Turkey Creek by replacing language with beyond one-half mile of Turkey Creek. This is a change from the briefing presentation, but it was updated for you in February with the transmittal. Next slide. Thank you. This slide shows the entire Energy Industrial Park site on the left. And the currently adopted language is that the commercial may not be located east of Turkey Creek. The graphic on the right shows the current boundary of the creek with the blue line, and also the one-half mile distance that the applicant is now proposing. Next slide. Thank you. The amendment was transmitted for agency review. There were no objections, but there were some agency comments of note. The Environmental Protection Commission mentioned that the Sydney Mine Sledge Pond Superfund site is located on the property, and any proposed use or alterations within, or perhaps adjacent to the ponds, must be approved through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The Office of Emergency Management mentioned that the amendment aligns well with the current goals of the local mitigation strategy. And Development Services noted that the zoning would need to be amended to accommodate the proposed changes if approved. Next slide, please. The Hillsborough County Environmental Services Division mentioned that there is a declaration of restrictive covenant for the Sydney Mine Superfund site that restricts certain uses on the property. Conditions that reduce or eliminate the risk of exposure of the groundwater contaminants to the users of the property are included in that covenant. And then Hillsborough County Community and Infrastructure Planning mentioned that absent information on specific uses for the property, traffic impacts cannot be fully measured at this time. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission has found the proposed revisions to this text consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Future land use element Policy 1.4 that related to compatibility. The proposed changes would still concentrate the most intensive development along the State Road 60 corridor, which is consistent with this policy direction. The neighborhood protection policies that modify Objective 16, notably in keeping with the most intensive development along State Road 60, that's consistent with Policy 16.5, which calls for developments of higher intensity that are located adjacent to established neighborhoods be restricted to collectors and arterials and to other locations external to those neighborhoods. The proposed modifications would be consistent with this policy direction as the language would still focus the most intensive uses along that corridor. And then also consistent with the Energy Industrial Park goal and Policy 59.11, which talks about the addition of the language of beyond one-half mile, would clearly specify a limit to those intensive uses traveling eastward through the site. And the modification would provide some flexibility as far as future development. would provide some flexibility as far as future development is concerned, while also being sensitive to the adjacent residential uses and the rural character located to the south and the east. Next slide, please. That brings us to the recommendation. The Planning Commission recommends the proposed Comprehensive Plan text amendment HCCPA 23-15 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant here?
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward and Henderson. I just want to make a couple of quick clarifications. I'm here representing this applicant on this application, and that's Turkey Creek Preserve. They are the owners of the easternmost half of the site, and so I just want to make that clear. And although the comments from EPC indicated there's a superfund site, there is not a superfund site on the east side. That is on the west side, and I think you'll hear more about that in your next hearing, but I just want to clarify that for the record, that that's not actually on our client's property. And then one of the other most important things we're accomplishing with this amendment that Melissa didn't talk about is that we've added language that allows us to allocate the entitlements between the two property owners. When this came through at first time, it was one contemplated to be one property owner. We need the ability to have each of the owners process their entitlement separately and to allocate both the entitlements and the energy uses between the parcels, and this accomplishes that. Otherwise, there have been no changes since you transmitted, and we would respectfully request your approval for adoption this evening, and we're here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Excuse. We are not the superfund site. We're not talking about that. We're talking about things like an engineer's report in 1978 spoke about the mine after it was closed. It continued to be used to bring debris from other phosphate mining and spew bill, which will basically cut off any chance rebuild, which will basically cut off any chances for an injured party after you develop it to gain any damages. It's just, it's not a coincidence. So the powers that be and the power brokers are working not only in this county, but in the state, and it's got Mosaic in mind, and it's got speculative landowners that just want to turn 100,000 acres of former phosphate mines in Florida into subdivisions and strip malls, and it's really wrong. So I urge you to not accept this and not adopt it. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker.
Good evening. Commissioners Yvette Neiman, Dover, East Hillsborough. Our coalition, Fixed Hillsborough Neighborhood Coalition, is in constant touch with the entire community in East Hillsborough. You may not want to hear it, but our community does not want these amendments adopted. They know that there are many health risks having thousands of people living and working on land that has a lot of contamination. The EPA has just revised issued a revised risk determination for dioxane. This is the document. I'll read, I'll read what they determined. The EPA concluded in its final revised risk determination that 14 dioxane poses an unreasonable risk to human health based on cancer and non-cancer risks to workers and occupational non-users and cancer risk to the general population from exposure to 14 dioxane in drinking water. Moving the earth around to build stores, homes, and any buildings will put that toxic dust into the air, and we'll end up having to breathe it into our lungs. We don't think that a profit for the owners is worth making the rest of us sick. Please don't adopt these amendments. Test before you approve this land use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wants to speak to this item? Okay, I've got a few individuals that have signed up virtually. Is there a Penny Martin on the line?
Yes.
Good evening.
Penny Martin, I'm a ground zero resident. Our community is waiting for the environmental suitability analysis to be done on the 3,000 acres under review for residential use before any commercial buildings get approved. We should postpone this case for investigation also, just like we did a few minutes ago for the proposed VA center. This testing must be completed in order for our community to feel safe. The data gaps of testing are so vast. There is a toxic superfund site with forever chemicals out there in the ground. The occupers are at risk. The community is at risk. We must pause this request for now. There are sinkhole concerns, high levels of radon, and the 14 dioxane is above acceptable limits, as well as other chemicals of concern that we know exist out there. Testing of all 3,000 acres must be done first. We don't want to be the next Drummond case like our neighbors in Lakeland or the folks in Hinckley, California where a single mom with three kids fought for her town's safety. This text amendment is not consistent with our comp plan and plus goals either. Our coalition group shared a detailed package for all of you to review in August of 2024 with the inconsistencies that we identified. To touch on a few, they include the growth management control, a land use suitability, policy 13.6 addresses environmental considerations, control of urban sprawl. Page two addresses commercial location criteria. Fast forward to page 36, it discourages strip commercial development specifically under objective 23, just to name a few. We know this other parcel is pending for commercial use. All of this land needs to be tested first. That abandoned phosphate mine that is part of this area has never been reclaimed or tested, which means we need to pause this request. There was oil grease and septic dumped out there in some lines that created a toxic superfund site. Hidden barrels of toxic waste were discovered years after mining in the southern portion of the land, right where the homes are supposed to go. What else is out there? There's still yet to be discovered. Our occupers at stake. We don't know until we test for it. The sinkholes, flooding concerns, the protected wetland area are also of concern. There's a significant threat of contamination, high levels of radon concerns, and if this land is disturbed, it could corrupt not only the site in question, but the surrounding wealth, property, but most importantly, all of us. The floodplain map that was submitted is also inconsistent per the reports with FEMA's 100-year floodplain map and SWRPA's map. There is also potential for contamination in the actual Turkey Creek. The entire site needs to be properly assessed to ensure surrounding residents, county folks, and state citizens here and across the state lines do not face adverse health impact. A rural country area is not ready for commercial strip centers, and this does not meet the criteria for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Please deny this request tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Is there Christopher McNeil on the line? Nope. Please come forward.
Christopher McNeil did not sign in.
All right, he's in the audience. Come forward. Okay. Brady Harris, virtual?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brady Harris. I live in Dover, Florida, and I'm surrounded on three sides of the EIP property. I live adjacent to Turkey Creek, the creek itself, and I've been flooded out two times now in the past recent years because of all the development in this area. I can only imagine what this building of any sort on this property was due to the residents in this general area, along with myself. One of the most important things is I have a drainage ditch that runs into Turkey Creek through my property from the EIP property, and it has high levels, over 500, of radiation in my ditch. I can't even let my grandchildren play in there, play on my property anymore because of the damage. At the last meeting, two commissioners brought up the fact that they were in favor for testing. I still don't know if any of the 3,000 acres has been tested, and if so, we don't have any, there's been no report that I've been able to read, and the infrastructure in this area isn't available for this development. And I still have not heard of anything energy first on this property. That's what it was designated for, was energy first, and now they're trying to skirt around the rural. And I can't for the life of me figure out how it went from inconsistent last year to consistent now through the same planning commission. If someone could explain that to me, I would be open ears to that. So I would ask each and every one of you commissioners to put a yield on this until further testing is done and infrastructure is in place for this and would not adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Davison, is he on the line?
Good evening, commissioners. Jim Davison, 17823, Woodmont Place, Tampa. And the state of Florida, through the Commerce Department, has informed the county, and I quote, "The EIP property is in a location of a former phosphate mine and includes the Sydney Phosphate Mine Superfund Site. The county should revise the amendment to be supported by an environmental suitability study analysis demonstrating the suitability of the proposed location of the residential dwelling units regarding the presence and protection of floodplains, wetlands, surface area, and groundwater, as well as the potential risk associated with sinkhole, radon, gas, and the former mining use of the EIP property. Based on the environmental suitability analysis, the county should revise the potential location of residential dwelling." You don't have the answers to any one of those questions and concerns, and you're going to vote on this Comprehensive Plan amendment. You know, radon kills 21,000 people a year. That's more than all the auto accidents that kill pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcycles combined. And just like a bad road design can lead to auto accidents, a bad comprehensive plan can lead to death and illness, and that's what you're going to allow to happen. This is such a, and I said, I will allow the lawyer to tell you what the word "should" is legally defined as. This is a moral question, and you really need to think hard about what you're doing here. The radiation doesn't care one way or the other whether you say yes or no. It's going to do what it's going to do. But the only way you can prevent it from doing anything is to study it and prevent the exposures from occurring. I urge you to not pass this tonight, to delay it until you get this information. It will show you how it has to be done, just like those plans from 50 years ago, the Zeller Williams report and the 1978 report. It said the land that you're going to put these homes on is not able to hold the lands, and it was not recommended in those reports. Never came up in any of the meetings. You really need to stand back, take a deep breath, and make sure that this land is going to be safe for the surrounding citizens and for the citizens you're going to wind up putting on that land. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. And that closes the public hearing. We go into board discussion. Commissioner Winstall?
Thanks. I'm going to reserve most of my comments because we have the second half, so I don't want to doublespeak a lot, but I'll just say briefly, we can't, we can't make them rewrite a plan that was approved 15 years ago. We can't just go in and say, hey, we're going to rewrite your plan on your property that was approved 15 years ago, can we? Can we force them to do that and change their property entitlements?
So, Commissioner, any change in their entitlements would be best applicant-driven, otherwise could open up for some exposure.
I just, I want to make that clear, and the reason, only one speaker said it, the reason that there's been such a drive on the fact and educational point that there are very, very heavy industrial and commercial entitlements on these properties is because none of the canned emails that we received indicated or suggested that anyone seemed to understand that, and I found that very concerning, that if this is voted on, whether or not, yes or no, today, that they will still have millions of square feet of entitlements. They can go and get permits and go through the normal environmental resources process and start disturbing the dirt that has been said so many times. And as you'll hear after the next item, we have what I have found the most unique and heavy-handed environmental requirements on a piece of property in Hillsborough County. So I'm not going to cover it all, since we're going to have to hear the other half of it, but I want to make that very clear to everyone listening, that there is, no matter what anybody else is saying, we had our legal counsel confirm this, and we cannot control it, even if we don't like it, from 15 years ago, this was approved with very heavy entitlements. We can't do anything about those. Whatever has been approved has been approved. Whatever processes are in place are in place for that. We cannot stop that from happening. Whatever environmental protections were or were not placed on it 15 years ago, that's of the past. All we can do right now is seize the opportunity that since the applicant is asking for a change today, we can ask for more requirements on the environmental side today. We cannot affect what happened 15 years ago, and I think that that has been left out of every single email that we've received, is that there is millions of undeniable square foot of heavy commercial on these properties that are fully entitled. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that. So I'll go into my deeper conversation about the environmental protections after the next Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. I don't see anyone else on the queue. Can we have a motion on CPA 23-15?
Vote for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Bowles. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Cameron Sapata voted no.
Okay, Planning Commission, introduce the next item.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I will also be presenting this item. This is HCCPA 24-06, Energy Industrial Park Residential Uses is the plan amendment. This is a privately-initiated text amendment that applies to one geographical area of the county and would affect text under the Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category. The site is located in the urban service area, and it is not located within the limits of a community plan. Regarding the impacts of the request, the currently adopted language does not allow for any residential uses beyond the caretaker and security lodging. There is also a language that requires the renewable energy first, and there's no co-location language in the currently adopted language. There's also a requirement that a minimum of 40% of the land area in the environmental, I'm sorry, the Energy Industrial Park Future Land Use category must be utilized for energy-producing uses. There is also no floor area ratio, or FAR, specified for the security or lodging housing. Also with the current language, other EIP, other Energy Industrial Parks may potentially be considered countywide. And then lastly, open space requirements do not specify whether agricultural uses are permitted or not. Next slide, please. The proposed language would change the name of the future land use category to Energy Innovation Park. It would remove the word ancillary in, as a transcript transmittal hearing on February 13th, Commissioners Bowles and Winstall added some new language to the red line, which you'll see in your backup. It is already incorporated in that, and that's what was transmitted to the state. One of the modifications included language about requiring coordination with federal, state, and local agencies regarding specifically the superfund site. Another change included language requiring pre-construction radiation sampling and mitigation systems, as well as other environmental assessments. And the last change will require a 14 dioxane contamination testing requirement in the areas south of the railroad tracks, and again, that's the area where the proposed residential would occur. Next slide, please. This slide shows a more detailed view of the entire EIP site. The crosshatched area on the south side of the railroad tracks, again, is approximately 475 acres. 475 acres. This is where the applicant is seeking to place the residential development, and the other changes that I mentioned would affect the entire site. Next slide, please. These are the agency review comments that we went over in February, so I'll just highlight a couple of them. There were no objections, just some comments of note. The Environmental Protection Commission mentioned that the Sydney Mine Sledge Pond Superfund Site is on the northern portion of the Energy Industrial Park property, and any proposed use or alterations within, or perhaps adjacent to, the ponds must be approved through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The Office of Emergency Management mentioned that the amendment aligns well with the current goals of the local mitigation strategy. And then again, Development Services mentioned that zoning would need to be amended to accommodate the proposed changes if they are approved. The Hillsborough County Environmental Services Division did highlight that there's a declaration of restrictive covenant for the Sydney Mine Superfund Site to restrict certain uses of the property, and those conditions reduce or eliminate the risk of exposure of the groundwater contaminants to the users of the property. And then the groundwater assessment process for additional parameters was discussed with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, as well as the U.S. EPA in July of 2024, and that field work will be starting this year in 2025. And that will inform if any revisions to that restrictive covenant are necessary. Next slide, please. The Hillsborough County Community and Infrastructure Planning Department mentioned that Dover Road is a two-lane, undivided roadway with a maximum service volume of 16,815 cars per day. Based on the 2020 Hillsborough County Level of Service Report, currently 7,400 existing trips utilize Dover Road daily. The maximum potential residential development of the project is estimated to generate 9,926 daily trips, and the potential trip generation plus the existing traffic will force Dover Road over its level of service standard of D by 511 vehicles. Next slide, please. I showed this slide at the transmittal hearing, and I thought it would be good to go over it again for the board and the audience, just given the number of concerns that have been raised about the environmental impacts to introducing residential into the Energy Industrial Park site because of the superfund site. This slide shows the proposed residential area, which is crosshatched in pink, in relation to the superfund area, which is in orange. And as you can see, it's about 4,000 feet from the proposed residential area to the superfund area. In addition, the proposed residential area to the southwest of the railroad tracks will be required to connect into central water and sewer, public water and sewer, as the entirety of the Energy Industrial Park is located in the urban service area. It should also be noted that there is nothing about the proposed text amendment that would remove or alter the existing superfund site or any of the regulatory processes that are required for the site. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission has found the proposed text amendment consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Objective one calls for directing growth into the urban service area. As noted in our report, unincorporated Hillsborough County is expected to add approximately 482,000 people between 2020 and 2045. So modifying the existing language of the Energy Industrial Park to include the potential of additional housing units to the urban service area adjacent to existing residential is consistent with that policy direction. The modification to include residential uses in this area is all so consistent with Future Land Use Element Policy 16.3, which calls for development to be integrated with adjacent land uses with the creation of like or complementary uses. Single-family residential or townhomes adjacent to residential uses would be consistent with this policy direction. And then, given the applicant's indication in their narrative that they're committed to maintaining the alternative energy output and will not be reducing its energy commitment, the proposed changes are consistent with the goal of the Energy Industrial Park language, as well as Future Land Use Element Policy 59.1, which includes the renewable energy production requirements, and also language about the ever-changing nature of the renewable energy field. Next slide, please. This item was transmitted to the state, and we were provided two technical comments. The first comment mentioned that while there is mention of residential as a potential use to the south of the railroad tracks, they mentioned that there's no explicit prohibition of residential uses in the other areas of the Energy Industrial Park. So they suggested adding language to explicitly say that residential would not be allowed beyond that one pocket. The second comment had to do with the 700-acre area that's mentioned in the text. The state said that they feel like it would be helpful to have some sort of reference map to specifically call out where that area is. The applicant is aware of these comments as well, and they may address them in their presentation. Last slide. Oh, actually, that was the last slide, sorry. Planning Commission recommendation is for this comprehensive plan amendment, HCCPA 24-06, to be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, so applicant here. Good evening.
Commissioners, good evening. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller for 1 East Jackson Street, number 2100. Normally, I wouldn't give a presentation, but just due to the number of public comments we've gotten along the way, I just wanted to bring you up to speed and address a couple of the citizen comments from earlier. To start, I put six new letters of support into the record just now that I've received over the last week. And I think those letters and the lack of audience behind me today, I think the reason for that is the new environmental conditions that we're going to talk about, and Commissioner Winstall mentioned earlier. I think the citizens are starting to understand they would rather have something like this, our vision for Dover Farms in their backyard, as opposed to this, which is what is approved today on this site in the southwest of the energy park. And again, as several commissioners have noted already, there is a massive amount of entitlements on this property already today, over 7.3 million square feet. And some very, very unusual and extremely intense uses are approved today in an energy park, including a resource recovery facility, which is actually where you take trash to the site and you burn it to generate energy. I mean, this is one of the most intense uses I can think of. So again, we're using that residential pod that we're proposing to essentially be a buffer or a transition between the neighborhoods and those very intense industrial and agricultural uses. The other thing that really wasn't a consideration 15 years ago is all of the growth the county has seen. This is the largest undeveloped property within the urban service boundary, and as you all are struggling with decisions of when and where to expand, we've got a great opportunity right here that acts as a bridge between Valrico and ultimately what will be the plant city limits. So let me be very clear about what we've committed to with environmental. You've heard a lot of comments already. This site is absolutely overseen by the EPA. The superfund is overseen by the EPA. They have studied the site, and they determine what is safe. And that's why you have these concentric rings, because it gets, the restrictions get less naturally, as it should, as you get away from that superfund site. The 1-4 dioxane, that is being studied, and that was, in fact, in one of these conditions. Commissioners, I've worked on probably close to 200 comp plan amendments around the state in my career. I've never worked on a site with this many environmental restrictions in the comprehensive plan. And keep in mind, all of this actually has to get to a further level of detail in the rezoning. We've committed to that. That's what they say. That's what we're going to have to work out with your staff over the next six to nine months. Our entire team is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Good evening again, George Nieman, Dover, Florida. There's a few things I would love to say, and I won't curse or whatever, I'm going to try and be civil. But the traffic report that was used is from 2020. It's five years old. So what you see in the traffic counts would be much worse than what they're showing, which is over what the capacity is. And I think that we really should consider that the superfund site keeps being mentioned, the EPA keeps being mentioned. The EPA is not monitoring 90%. The other 90% of this mine area, so let's just drop the superfund site, because that's a distraction. And let's get to the matter of putting homes on what were settlement ponds that had no lining in the old days when they used them. And that stuff has seeped through and gone into the soil, and we've got homes, a couple of homes down from me that has a well. They use drinking water, because we're still rural in designation. And their well has been poisoned with arsenic, which is a byproduct of phosphate mining. So there's a lot going on from that land. Dover Woods is built on, there was a lot of clay sand, which is contaminated. So we're getting scared, just learning a lot about living next to the mine, let alone putting people on the mine. And we've come in contact, we've talked to hundreds of citizens in the area, our coalition did, and there are people telling stories of so many people in their family having cancer. And we just think it has to be proven that it's not related to being close to the mining area. And come on, let's be smart about it. There's 49,908 acres of developable and redevelopable land that the Planning Commission told you about not too long ago. So it's not like we've run out of space where we say, oh, my God, another 12,000, 1,200 people, families will be coming to Florida. Where are we going to put them? That's not the point. I think we're using that as an excuse. There's so many excuses here, just to say, let's let this land speculator use the land. The land does have restrictions, so let's be honest, and let's look at them and modify the plan if it's unhealthy.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak this evening? Okay, we've got a few folks that have signed up online. Is there Manny Nino?
Yep, I'm here.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. The reason why I wanted to call in and speak about this matter is because, you know, some of the things haven't been mentioned already. If this was an option between not developing at all, guaranteeing it would stay the same, and the homes, I think that's one conversation. But that's not the case. I was frankly shocked when I found out, you know, I live on Dover myself. I was shocked when I found out of all the permissions they have with the development over there, they can build, you know, a fish farm, they can burn garbage, industrial zones, warehouses, all these things. I pray to God that you guys put in homes everywhere in there, right? Because if you already have permission to develop this area for industrial, and you don't need my opinion, or my neighbor George Nieman's opinion, or the commission to do anything about that, then yeah, let's change it up so they can build some homes in there so that at least we earned that, we have a buffer zone between us and whatever else they're going to build. I mean, you'd make the entire thing out of homes, okay? Remove any industrial permissions and just fill it up with homes and shops and whatever so the land uses and that's heavy. So, you know, I'm sympathetic to everything that everyone's been saying about the concerns of the environment, and, you know, that they lived here forever, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I get it. You know, it's a little bit of NIMBYism going on, too. Nobody wants a big construction in their backyard. I get it. But they already have permissions, nasty permissions, disgusting permissions. So anything that would get us away from that, including building 1,800 single-family homes, I'm a big-time supporter of, I'm in favor of. Frankly, you know, you could build 5,000 homes. I don't care. I would rather have that than some gas-burning thing there that's already permitted, right? So I'm just looking at this practically. It does, like this obstructionism, and to call the owner a land speculator, that's a little rich, right? The gentleman's a private property owner. He has a right to do with his property right now to burn garbage on it. So if the gentleman wants to build some homes on that, I'm all in favor. I don't know what the issue is. So, you know, let's show a little respect to the private property rights of our neighbors. Let's have a little bit of sense and acknowledge what's burning garbage there. You'd rather have single-family homes. And let's vote in favor of this amendment, you know? Yeah, it makes sense to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Penny Martin?
Hi, Penny Martin. I wanted to revisit the nine inconsistencies that this case had before the last meeting. It included the urban service area, community design component, the neighborhood development objectives, and the EIP goals that did not support this request. A few words got changed, added, text moved around, some old references deleted. The staff then presented a new plan, and everything instantly became consistent. Our coalition group gave you a review package in August of 2024 that outlined multiple concerns that we never even saw addressed. I'm not going to discuss them in detail, but a few things. Our comp plan's number-one goal is to protect the community. It does not appear that this is happening. It is never okay to build homes on a former phosphate mine that has never been tested. It was also, we found inconsistencies under goal number two for mobility. On page 82, referencing the environmental and sustainability goals were not consistent, the energy park goals as well. When reviewing the FLOODS plan, we had also identified things that weren't consistent under page one, growth management goals, the timing of growth, land use suitability, and so many other areas. I'm not going to go into detail. The renewable energy is what we wanted and need. It's not even a requirement now. That got completely changed. The changes to the wording did not make it consistent in my eyes. Our community is at risk based on what's going on out there. We do know that there is a clay bottom, and the ground is unstable, and we've been told that the spectators to buy this land are few and far. We did finally pique your interest about the contamination concerns and testing being mandated by the public in the last meeting. We've tried for over 20 years to get your attention, and it finally happened. There was a lot of questions asked, but very few answers. The recommendations from the DOC are to include an environmental suitability analysis, and this must be completed in order for our community to feel safe before any decisions are made. We all know there is 1-4 dioxin above the susceptible levels and other chemicals of concern. The radon levels are extremely high as we sit on top of the radon corridor. We're aware of the sinkholes, flooding issues, and wetlands of concern. The company, the phosphate companies run phosphate by way of the railroad track that runs right next to the proposed neighborhood, right where they plan to put pools in, the playgrounds, and the daycare center. We know from reports this ground has this clay-based bottom and is not very stable. We don't want to be the next case, like the Drummond case in Lakeland. Under the TSCA, which addresses the toxic substances, section six, the EPA is required to conduct a detailed evaluation for safety from existing 1-4 dioxins, and we hope that's going to happen. Right now, the plan is to put humans out there, especially children, on top of this land. Are we out of our minds?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Appreciate your comments.
And get tested.
Is Brady Harris on the line?
Yes, Brady Harris, Dover, Florida. Again, I live right next to the property, and I bring up the same objection. Leave it as it is, or was, in 2010, and again, adopt it into 2022. And why are we using a traffic report from 2020 that's five years old when we're at the height of the pandemic, when, you know, the traffic was, volume should have been very low? Why aren't we using a new traffic report? And what about the infrastructure? What about the schooling? What about the emergency personnel? I mean, where's the money going to come from that? I mean, you know, I mean, are y'all going to, I want to be going to change the bill, fire departments, you know? What about the What about the security, safety of the residents that already live there? And Turkey Creek is a small creek. It wouldn't have ever meant for a drainage. And I can't understand how you got, I think Mr. Kramer said he has six letters to present in favor for this, and then the gentleman spoke earlier in favor. We have thousands and thousands of petitions against this, and not one resident in my general area that I've heard of is in, is in, that thinks this is a good idea. Everybody that I know is opposed to this. Why don't we slow down, do the testing, or leave it as it is? And if there was, if there was, if the owners can make money out of using it as it is, and let them make the money as it is, and put in the commercial and industrial on Highway 60 that's at least two lanes, or four-lane roads? We can't handle the traffic on Durant, Turkey Creek, or South Florida. Just can't handle the traffic. The schooling is, can't handle the amount of children. We're going to be overcrowded and flooded out. And your flooding out residents who lived there their entire lives, that still farm and have cattle and everything. So I would ask again for y'all to oppose this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Deborah Holliday?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Debbie Holliday. Okay. My name is Debbie Holliday. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. It's one thing to stand up for a landowner's wishes to develop his land, but when that development endangers the lives of residents, it just doesn't make sense. It is unbelievable that the county would approve building on an old phosphate mine that has radioactive tailings from not one, but two phosphate mines. In addition to the radon gas that will be emitted, you heard about the cancer-causing chemical called dioxane and how it spreads when the ground gets disturbed. You've heard about the fluoridons that are from the land, so that are all over the 3,000 acres. We need testing for all of the 3,000 acres to fully protect the residents. And again, we are not talking about the super fund site. I'm sick of that. You have heard about the potential for more flooding, and the flooding will come from contaminated ground. You have heard about the stink holes on the property, but no further investigation on this was ever requested by the DOCC. You have approved the owner's request to build a residential which could be for underprivileged families. Residents that if they are exposed to dangerous chemicals will likely not have the money to move somewhere else or be able to afford them medical bills from exposure. You have heard about the 2020 COVID traffic analysis that was done, that clearly does not represent the true picture of the traffic in this area. The roads can't handle over 2,000 more vehicles. We have too much congestion now. Commissioners Sepeda, we applaud your efforts to protect the residents, and we thank you for standing up to do the right thing. But could someone else who voted to approve these amendments tell us honestly why you approved the building of anything on this property? How many of you actually feel comfortable with the decision you made, knowing about all of these conditions? And to the applicant, you've got five letters from people who wanted this versus over 1,000 people who signed a petition opposing it? And why haven't these people come forward before now? Apparently, Mr. Nino is okay with exposing residents to contamination. What a great neighbor he is. That's it.
James Davison?
James, can you hear us?
Hello, Commissioner. Yeah. Hello, Commissioners. I just wanted to give, bring a few facts to this thing. They're talking about the large industrial complex that was already approved. We're talking about 1,200 homes, 2.6 persons per home in the county. That's around like, what, 3,000, 3,200 people, men, women, and children? That zip code that that's located in, 42% of the homes that have been tested exceed the radon level. And it's just a matter of fact, all of the zip codes around it, they're the only five or six zip codes in the whole county that have that level of 40, 50% radon levels. If you put 1,000 people in those homes, and the radon levels are 20 picocuries per liter, you can expect 16 deaths from lung cancer just alone, and that's if they don't smoke. The radon will affect miscarriages, fertility, children's cognitive function, mental depression, behavior problems, and it goes on and on. If you have a disease, the radon will make it worse. And you have no idea. Menard Park, the air studies that was just done, exceeded the land use code for the county. So if you can't get it below that, they won't get a certificate of reclamation or use. You need to get the information. Otherwise, you're putting people at risk. The people that live around it, that dirt's going to get kicked up, and 2.5 micron particles of radioactivity is going to go to the homes, not just on the site, but around the site. And they're going to inhale it, and it will stay there forever. It's a fact. This has been well researched. This is the first phosphate mined land that had to go through this. There's gobs of research. That's why the state did it in 1970, in 1978 and 1980, even before radon became a thing. And they said the land was not stable where you want to put these homes. It's good for only agriculture. I bet you nobody even read the Zeller Williams report. Not even the planning commission. Or the 1978 report told them how much it was going to cost. So please, take a deep breath, think about what this means. The owners of this land, they can put off and do the studies and get this and then bring it back. They don't even know. And that tells me they're going to try to do whatever they need to get it done, levels or not. So I urge the commission to take a break and counsel their lawyers, should or should have known.
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Appreciate your comments. All right, that closes the public comment. We're going to board discussion. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you very much. And just to briefly answer Mr. Brady, the caller's questions about how does everything get paid for? That all gets handled through the rezone process when they determine exactly what may or may not be on there, including to the currently zoned entitlements, whether or not today's item gets approved. We wouldn't know how everything, all the infrastructure is going to get paid for until they go through the zoning process and impact, the current impact fee studies are applied to whatever's being proposed and approved. So that's how everything would get approved. I'm going to go into the environmental concerns because I 100% agree with all of the concerns and the state's comments that have been made, which, when I read the state's two-page document, it occurred to me that there's no way that they read the amendments that Commissioner Bowles and I put forward. There's no way they read it. I will, they can watch this recording, I will call them and tell them that somebody's not doing their job. They did not read the amendments that we put forward. Because if they had read the amendments that we put forward, they would have commented on the fact that, in, from what I read, in reality, we're requiring much further than what they even recommended, tying it to all of these different environmental agencies. I was very surprised that they made that recommendation and didn't note, especially on how specific Commissioner Bowles is to dioxane. You would think that they wouldn't say, oh, well, it seems like you should do this, this property-wide study. We're going to target way more specific than they are requiring. So I'm just going to read part of it, not all of it, just the most important part for anyone that's still listening. In 2010, the Hillsborough County Commissioners approved certain entitlements on this property. Fortunately for us, the applicants came back with a suggestion for an amendment which opened the door for the 2025 county commissioners to apply very heavy-handed and restricted environmental covenants and protections on this property. These conditions shall require the developer to coordinate with the appropriate environmental oversight agencies, and that prior to residential development, the developer will, if required by best industry practices and appropriate agency guidance, conduct a pre-construction radiation sampling to determine if mitigation systems or specialized construction techniques are needed, and if needed, such systems and/or techniques will be installed prior to issuance of any residential certificates of occupancy and other appropriate environmental assessments, which depending on the results, may require the developer to employ appropriate remediation techniques, engineering controls, and/or institutional controls, institutional controls which are applied to the super fund site, which is not where we're talking about anymore. We are talking about them disturbing any of the dirt over the areas that I just discussed. If we are truly worried about disturbing the dirt and what that might do to our water, this is the only environmental oversight that is currently being applied to the project, much less everything else that they would have normally had to do in the zoning process. This should be considered a huge win compared to what was already approved and entitled in 2010. I understand the reservations for any more growth in the area, but it's already done. This is a sweeping restriction in the comprehensive plan, which is much more significant than applying it to a rezone, which could be then changed later. This is making it for any rezones that they come forward with, this will continue to be applied unless they go through this entire process over again. This is a very heavy-handed process in environmental control that's being applied over this piece of property. It's a significant environmental win for Hillsborough County, then was already in place. So under good conscience, alternative to what the one caller called in and spoke about introducing, he's right, all of these things may occur under the current entitlements that are there because these protections are not in place. And that is why I must support the opportunity to amend what they did 15 years ago and put these protections in place that do not currently exist. So I will hear my other colleagues speak that are queued, but I will be supporting adding these very significant protections to the community.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, thank you. While I understand the importance of development for our community, we must prioritize the health and well-being of our residents. There is significant concern regarding the potential health risk associated with the presence of radiation in the soil. Although the developer would be conducting the testing, the community remains deeply worried about the potential impact on their health, especially if the land is disturbed. Given the uncertainty and the potential risk involved, we need to ensure that the health of the residents is not compromised by any construction activities. I believe it's our responsibility to ensure that any development in our county is safe for everyone involved, so I will not be supporting this.
Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you. I again echo what my colleague, Commissioner Wostel, was saying, that this is our best opportunity to make the changes that we're all talking about. You don't want development? We can't force them not to develop. There's nothing we can do, nothing at all that we can do that can prohibit that. I mean, I don't know what happened in 2009 or 10 to create this special carve-out that is in our county, but there's an analogy about making chicken salad. That's what we're doing right now. We're trying to do the best we can making chicken salad right now. And what we're doing is making sure that the people who are living around it are being monitored with the 1,4 forever chemical, dioxane, and those who are going to be working and/or living there at some point. And putting these restrictions on this property that we've done is the best opportunity we're ever going to have. It's sat 15 years with nothing happening. And because the property owners on the east and west side, particularly the west property owners, have agreed to allow us to do this, they worked with us on this efforts. And I think that barring anything else coming forward, we're never going to get another opportunity like this again. It's taken 15 years for this to happen. Who knows what's going to happen later? And whether it's garbage burning, aquaculture, you know, you want, we don't want to have fish farms out there, but you know, we're, that's okay, they can do that now. They don't want us digging up, but we can have fish growing in those ponds. And that would be okay. I think the building code right now currently prohibits, or at least not prohibits, but provides for the opportunity for radon mitigation processes, especially in that particular area, under 5.5, statute 5.53 or something to that effect. But there are a lot of mitigation efforts that are currently there. And for those reasons, I will be supporting the text amendment.
Good points. Commissioner Myers, and then we need a motion.
Okay. Commissioners Wostel and Bowles, thank you so much for your comments. I'm going to move for approval.
A motion approved. Commissioner Myers, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bowles and Cohen, please record your vote on CPA 2406.
Motion carries, six to one. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda voted no.
Good. Planning Commission, introduce the next item.
Yes, sir, I'll be presenting that as well. That's HCCPA 24-32. Thank you. Again, Melissa Leinhard for the record, Planning Commission staff, presenting to you the amendment for the Planned Environmental Community Policy 47.18. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated text amendment that applies to approximately 1,954 acres of land west of US Highway 301, just south of the Pasco County border. This is a text amendment to future land use element policy 47.18, under objective 47, and it would delete that policy. Next item, please. This item is part of the October 2024 cycle of plan amendments. The planned environmental community future land use category is located in the rural area, and it is not located within the limits of a community plan. The planned environmental community category was a new category and text that was proposed in 2005 through a privately initiated text amendment process. As far as the impacts are concerned, adopted policy 47.18 outlines that planned developments in this category must provide public access to portions of a regional resource. This requirement does not mandate a trail access to all portions of the resource. If the public policy prohibits public entry, access shall be limited to viewing access. And a regional resource is defined as a large, a minimum of 1,000 acres, environmentally significant and verified publicly owned park or natural resource area. And the examples that are given are ELAP lands, rivers, streams, bays, and lakes. The proposed text amendment includes the deletion of this policy in its entirety, and the applicant is citing safety concerns outlined by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Next slide, please. This amendment was transmitted to the reviewing agencies. There were no objections received. However, there were two agency items of note. The community and infrastructure planning department of Hillsborough County encouraged the applicant to explore other options to connect to a regional resource where feasible. And the Office of Emergency Management revised their comments to say no comment. Next slide, please. The planning commission has found this proposed text amendment consistent with the objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, namely within the recreation and open space section. There is policy direction promoting access to regional resources such as parks and natural areas. However, there are also policies in these sections of the plan that emphasize the importance of public safety. Within the environmental and sustainability section, there's policy direction about avoiding impacts to natural resources. One policy specifically calls out for the minimization of impacts on open spaces, flood plains, and environmental resources. One objective focuses on managing natural preserves to ensure a healthy functioning environment, economy, and quality of life. And one objective emphasizes the importance of preserving and restoring natural vegetation and wildlife habitats along rivers and primary tributary, tributaries, sorry. These policies speak to the importance of preserving natural spaces and avoiding impacts on environmental features. The Office of Park Planning with the Department, Florida Department of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, has submitted a letter that was submitted by the applicant as part of their application that outlines their support for deleting this requirement from the comprehensive plan, citing concerns about safety and environmental impacts. With the Office of Park Planning citing their concerns in writing, it can be surmised that the avoidance of impacts and the focus on public safety in this location would take precedence over public access. And based upon that policy direction that I mentioned, the implementation of policy 47.18 would not be in the overall interest of Hillsborough County, nor would it further the policies of the plan when considered from a holistic and comprehensive perspective. This item was transmitted to the state, and no comments are received. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 24-32, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Now, is the applicant here?
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson, again representing Eisenhower Property Group. We don't have a separate presentation. It was pretty straightforward. The state asked us to remove this condition, and we are asking to do so, to respectfully request your approval.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? Now, can we have a motion for?
Move approval, second.
We got a motion to approve CPA 24-32 by Commissioner Cohen. Second, Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, our next two items will have a combined presentation and hearing. Staff, will you introduce the first item?
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. Staff is here tonight for adoption hearing for HCCPA 24-35. This is privately initiated text amendment to expand the urban service boundary by about 370 acres. It's associated with the HCCPA 24-36. We'll get to right after this. This shows you an aerial in the rural area today. You can see around this site the rural residential areas as well as a variety of agricultural uses that you see here. The same applicant has both the east and the west side. To the north is County Road 672. To the south, off the screen, would be State Road 674. And Baumwimama Road is running straight up and down the middle right there, hence why we have Baumwimama West and Baumwimama East. This, just a little bit going back, shows you how far out we are from the current urban service boundary. We'll be able to see it in the map. But again, this board has already transmitted the Residential Plan 2 in this area to the state for review. This is in that area again, so there is some context there. The amendment would bring 370 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. There were no objections from county agencies. Again, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies: future growth within to the urban service boundary as well as objectives and policies for the expansion of the urban service boundary. With that, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Moving on to the next one, HCCPA 24-36. This is privately initiated regular map amendment. Same thing, there's 370 acres. Currently, it is Residential Plan 2. Applicant is asking for Residential 4. Shows you currently where we are, all the way to the south in that Baum community plan area, as well as the South Shore area-wide systems. Again, moving in on the site and the aerial. This is the current adopted future land use map showing the Residential Plan 2 on the area. Also to the south, you can see the Wimama Village Residential 2, that blue-purple look. And then the light green is the Agricultural Rural 1 to 5. This would show the Residential 4 if this were adopted tonight. A little bit about the impacts here. Basically, we are effectively doubling the density, going from 2 to 4. The FARs basically are the same. If you did a planned village, you would go up to a .35. Again, you'd lose some of that community commercial by going from RP2 to Residential 4. The site itself, on the subject site, looking to the north, see the new light that's just in on 672 there. On the site, looking to the south, on the site, looking to the southwest, on Baumwimama Road, looking to the south, to the subject site there on the left. Again, there were no objections from county agencies. The proposed amendment is consistent with the objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, namely, again, future growth into the urban service boundary as well as the expansion of the urban service area. We would like to make mention that the State Department of Commerce did provide a technical comment. It is the same technical comment that they provided when we had privately initiated amendments down in Wimama, where they are looking for additional water and sewer connectivities and asking questions about servicing this area. Again, we believe that staff has provided the adequate information back to the Department of Commerce or that the applicant provided that information in their application. And with that, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommends the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for your time. This concludes this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. The applicant, come forward.
Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson, again representing Eisenhower Property Group. We don't have a separate presentation. The only thing that's changed between the last time you saw us and this new one is that you've already transmitted the overall RP2 plan amendment. So it's consistent with that, and we'd respectfully request your approval this evening.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? All right, can we have a motion for HCCPA 24-35?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Wohlstall, second Commissioner Bowles. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now, can we have a motion on HCCPA 24-36?
Move approval, second.
Motion, Commissioner Wohlstall, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Likewise, the last two items will be a combined presentation and hearing with separate votes. Planning Commission, can you introduce it?
Again, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 24-37. This is a privately initiated text amendment on 272 acres. This is an expansion of the urban service area associated with HCCPA 24-38. Same thing, so second verse, same as the first. This is right across the street from it. Just zooming out, and again, you can see the rural area around it as well as the agricultural uses. The impacts here, again, the amendment would bring 272 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connections to public water and sewer. Agency comments, there were no objections. And here, again, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies, namely, growth within the urban service area as well as objectives and policies to expand the urban service area. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Moving on to the companion map amendment, HCCPA 24-38. This is privately initiated regular map amendment. Again, that 272 acres from Residential Plan 2 to Residential 4. Where are we, again, with the Baum community plan, South Shore area-wide systems plan, all the way down to the south? Here we are, just zoomed in. Again, County Road 672 is to the north of us, Baumwimama Road, running north and south. This is the adopted future land use map showing the Residential Plan 2 on the site, Wimama Village Residential 2 directly to the south, as well as Agricultural Rural 1 to 5 out in the rural area. If the amendment were adopted tonight, this is the proposed residential floor on the site. Again, same thing with the impacts. Basically, it's doubling the density on the site. And also, if the proposed amendment would remove the Residential Plan 2, community commercial use, again, with that planned village concept that the RP2s enjoy. So here we are, looking south at the subject site from Baum Road. On the subject site, looking southeast. On the subject site, looking southwest. Obviously, you can see they're already building one. On the subject site, looking northwest. And with that, there were no objections from departments. And the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies: again, direction growth into the urban service boundary as well as expanding of the urban service boundary. Same technical comment that was provided by the Department of Commerce. And with that, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. The applicant, come forward.
Kami Corbett with Hillward and Henderson. I don't have anything further to add.
Excellent. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? All right, can we have a motion for HCCPA 24-37? Okay, motion, Commissioner Wohlstall, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Lastly, can we have a motion for HCCPA 24-38?
Move approval, second.
Motion, Commissioner Wohlstall, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Commissioner Wohlstall? Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned.
Melissa, with the time.